I'd like to call the April 11th Board of Education meeting to order at 7:02 at the Stanley T. Williams Community Center. We'll call Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Napria.
Here.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo.
Here.
Carolyn Canda Lora.
Here.
Vincent Mace.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
Here.
Hold the slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors. Sir, the left is sending us. Hi, guys.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
The NBHS National Honor Society hosted the annual spring senior citizen luncheon on March 28th at NBHS. Mr. Totten's food service classes prepared lunch and an NBHS concert choir, under the leadership of Mr. Philippies, performed for the citizens in attendance following lunch. The visitors were also provided with music upon their arrival by the NBHS Chamber Ensemble under the direction of Music Department Chair, Mrs. Katie Traynor. They were also provided a sneak peek of the Spring Musical with a number performed by the NBHS Drama Club under the leadership of Mrs. Cynthia Genzano. Additionally, seniors completed their capstone presentations on March 20th, half of the grade, and on April 10th for the other half of the grade. Mrs. Jennifer Tetto has successfully continued as the capstone coordinator. Students begin the process during their junior year and continue with various steps throughout the summer and then senior year. As a part of the presentation, students are required to present a product along with a Google Slide presentation. Students are provided half an hour to present with two to three staff members scoring their presentations using a rubric.
All right. Along with that, the NBHS Drama Club's Spring Musical Curtains took place on Thursday, April 4th, Friday, April 5th, and Saturday, April 6th. Mr. Reynolds with, sorry, Ms. Banana, sorry, I don't know how to say her name.
That's okay.
Mr. Philippies, Ms. Capwin. Another hard name. Oh, yeah, you got it.
You have a harder side to it.
Ms. Leonetti, Mr. Rice, and Ms. Mallard, and Ms. Torari were all significant contributors to this production. Along with that, Mr. Reynolds was named the NBHS Teacher of the Year on April 1st during the scheduled faculty meeting. Certified staff were provided the opportunity to nominate their peers during the month of March with voting taking place through March 27th. Mr. Reynolds has accomplished technology education educator at NBHS and continues to have a tremendous impact on his students and the program at NBHS. Mr. Reynolds teaches project lead the way courses with pre-engineering programs and automotive courses.
Very nice.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Now, did you guys do capstones?
Yes.
What were your projects?
So personally, I worked at the TBS Summer Camp over the summer. I want to be a pediatric nurse, hopefully a practitioner. And so I wanted the opportunity to work with children and kind of get that exposure before delving into the medical field, so I did my presentation on that.
Very nice, and you were happy with what you?
Yes, I was, very much so.
Perfect, because I know some kids have done capstones and picked projects and they were like, "Yeah, no, this isn't what I want to do after all." What was yours?
Well, that's what happened with me. I did. I did physical therapy and I didn't really enjoy the experience too much, so I changed now and then major in mechanical engineering instead.
Perfect.
That's a switch.
Yeah.
But you know what? Better than investing time and energy and money into something and finding out that you, you know, it's not for you at that point.
Exactly, that's why I told the people that were asking me questions, I said, "I think it's better off doing the capstone and figuring out, I don't want to do it now." Then after four years and spending a ton of money in college, then deciding, "Oh, I don't like this at all."
Perfect. Great job, guys.
Thank you.
There's a lot of parents out there watching this on TV saying, "I tried to tell my kids that." Thanks, guys. Have a great break next week.
Thank you very much.
You deserve it.
Thank you, guys. Enjoy, guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 14th, 2019 Board of Education meeting as submitted. All in favor? Aye. Any extension here or side?
Hi.
Among other things. Okay, go ahead. Then I'd like to approve the resignation of Don Wenicki, Director of Personnel and Business, effective June 28th, 2019, in accordance with the terms of his employment agreement with much appreciation for 25 years of dedicated service. Second discussion. We have a vote call vote being scored. Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Napria.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo.
Yes.
Carolyn Canda Lora.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Kendall Min...
Min Julie.
Min Julie to the position of a 1.0 school psychologist at Jerome Harrison Elementary School and to be placed at sixth year, step one, in accordance with the contract between the North Branford Federation of Teachers and the North Branford Board of Education, effective August 26th, 2019. Second discussion. Vote call vote. Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Napria.
Yes.
Secretary Siena.
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo.
Yes.
Carolyn Canda Lora.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
And I just want to, one, I thank you for approving this recommendation for hire. As you know, we had three openings for our school psychologists and it's a shortage area that they're very hard to find, so our ability to secure this person who was going to be absolutely tremendous, she's already come out and spent time with our youngsters, and as she gets closer to graduation and completes her program, she's going to come in and spend some time with this partner and this right to acclimate over the summer and hit the ground running and get to know as many of the students and parents before the school dries. So we're really excited.
I'm just curious, so she has her sixth year, obviously, but does she also, does a position like this also require a teaching certification?
No, it's a separate, Suzanne, if you want.
It's a separate certification as a school psychologist.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
Because a speech and language pathologist falls, that would need a teaching certificate.
No, they're certified as a speech and language, it's a separate certification area.
Oh, that's separate as well, so even though they act as a teacher, they don't need the teachings? Okay.
Yep, just for informational purposes, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take that as my cue to keep moving on as the superintendent's report, there's no rec, well, I shouldn't say there's no recommendation at that time. We have the Board of Ed briefs, there's a great deal there, I'm sure you had a chance to go through them, there's no field trips to approve at this time. The big thing that we do at the April meeting is we approve the graduation date, as you know, this year we have two snow days, so we are now pushed over to June 11th. So at this time, I would ask that you would motion and approve that date. I think we're far enough into the year, we're not going to have another snow day.
So I'd like to make a motion to establish the 2019 North Branford High School graduation date for Tuesday, June 11th, 2019.
A second. Any discussion? Right, all in favor?
Pray for a beautiful night. Bye.
Okay, next, the generally board meeting dates under the exhibit C, you have a list of dates starting January 16th, until 22nd, December 17th.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of the 2020 Board of Education meeting dates as provided.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to pass out to you the next item, so quite scat non-renewals, as required, any position that is either a short-term substitute, long-term substitute, or a one-year position, the board must act on and conclude that person's employment contract at an opening meeting. So I attached five motions to be read for individuals who are aware of this, and then you direct me to send a letter in writing to these five people.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-renewal of the one-year contract of employment of Jennifer Ackerman, physical education teacher, North Branford Intermediate School, for the 2019-2020 school year, and to direct the superintendent of schools to advise such person in writing of this action.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-renewal of employment of Donna Gallagher, long-term substitute reading specialist at Jerome Harrison Elementary School for the 2019-2020 school year, and to direct the superintendent of schools to advise such person in writing of this action.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-renewal of employment of Tom Valdisaro, long-term substitute special education teacher at Totucket Valley Elementary School for the 2019-2020 school year, and to direct the superintendent of schools to advise such person in writing of this action.
Discussion? Beth did, you just didn't hear her. Beth's very quiet. I know, she's soft. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-renewal of employment of Andrew Tyrol, long-term special education substitute at North Branford Intermediate School for the 2019-2020 school year, and to direct the superintendent of schools to advise such person in writing of this action.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make another motion to approve the non-renewal of employment of Shaina Walsh, long-term social work substitute at Jerome Harrison Elementary School for the 2019-2020 school year, and to direct the superintendent of schools to advise such person in writing of this action.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Along with the page on our attendance, the feasibility study, as you know, at the last meeting, we handed the feasibility study to you, you'd be up to submit questions or make comments. At this point, it's my understanding that we are ready to move forward. We had worked with Town Hall in drafting this, we used their template, and we are looking to then present it to them, they will then present it to, the council then will act on that, and that will start the process. If there was additional monies earmarked for the second part of that, bringing our total up to where we think we'll have to be to get three options for renovate, build new, or a hybrid. So that being said, I would be.
I'll make a motion to approve RFP number 8-2018/2019 for the North Branford High School feasibility study.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, along with those motions, we also have two other items which...
Should we do that under the budget? That's where it says it will take possible action, under committee reports.
Okay, perfect, okay, so I will bypass that recommendation and move on to the next piece for the town and Board of Ed Consolidation Committee, as you are aware, there is a joint committee in form, the council has submitted names, and we're looking for the council to submit what I think should be three names, the council has three members, my recommendation we have three as well. So that being said, that discussion is for you.
Is there anyone on early, or?
I would like to be on.
I would like to be on.
I would like to be on it, too.
Is anyone else interested in being on it, and then we can vote it if you'd like.
I'll run the election. You got four people that want to be on, right?
No, we have three.
Oh, sorry. I heard four people say they want to be on it.
Shauna Marcy and Carolyn.
Okay.
Do you want to be on it?
No, you only need three, right? I thought there was going to be election, I just won the election to hang up the ballot.
All right, you have your three.
You don't have your ballot right now, since we only have three, so.
You can take the motion, run your election by making the motion.
I move to approve the appointment of Beth, Siena.
Nope.
I'm saying who wins for the year.
Shauna, Marcy, and Carolyn.
Yeah, let's see.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Shauna, Marcy, and Carolyn, Board of Education members for the Town and Board of Education Consolidation Committee.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You open up a can of worms when you ask for discussion.
That's a report from our report.
All right, so we're moving on to any reports. There was new negotiations, budget and operations. Who was at budgets and operations today?
Everybody but you.
Okay, so someone gives the report other than me.
Basically, year-to-date, we're in good shape, just a couple rentals are in the negative a little bit, liability insurance and buildings, and although the health insurance, we will be getting $195,000 back to the Board of Ed that we had to pay for the risk, I think it was the risk corridor, or the loss, the stop, what was it, Maria, is it stop loss or was it risk corridor? She's not listening to me. At all. But anyhow, we're going to be getting it back, put back into our 213 account, medical and life insurance account from the town.
Why are we negative in rentals?
Done with the three areas.
Yeah, well rentals, because we've already, we won't be, we won't.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't be, it's expended, but not collected. And then we also talked about a bid to approve, I'll make a motion to approve the award of bid number 01-2019 for Jerome Harrison Water System for Equipment Purchase Only to Avon Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $42,518.
Second.
Okay, so this is for Jerome Harrison, this is for equipment only, and John Florio is going to do the work putting these in. We had sent it out before and we had gotten higher bids, much higher bids.
Is this for?
The water? Water, heat, the water system.
The water system equipment. It needed to be repaired, it was faulty.
Filtration? The filtration? Scott, what is it for? The water system?
Yes.
We need Don here. Don explained it.
He explained it.
He did explain it.
So there's...
Just the general idea, like filtration.
Something about the water pump, yeah, the water pumps and pumping through.
It's the same, it's the same equipment that's currently there now, so it's the whole water system as it comes in off the street. It has to, the pump has to be replaced, we're using the exact same parts. John's going to bypass, I'm hoping I'm doing this the right, what Don said, bypassed a couple of things that we've had problems with, so he's licensed as a plumber and a HIC guy, he can do all the work. This was the little bit, the first time it went out, so it was another $20,000 for the installation. We will do it during the day, save significant monies, we'll just purchase the equipment and put it in. But it's the pump, the whole water system for the school.
Okay.
We're replicating what's in there now.
We understand it when Don explains it, making me regurgitate, it's a little different.
It's for the pumps and the control system, and the controls, all right, so it's for both parts.
Yeah, no, I get, I get what parts they are, I just didn't want to know, I just wanted to know their function.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
It gets water from the street to the sinks to the sinks and all the way through. Other parts, I don't need to talk about.
Okay. All in favor for water?
Aye.
Did you leave a second?
Yes.
Yeah, we were in discussion.
Yes, Cindy, you seconded it. And then I'll make a motion to approve the award of bid number 04-2018 for the Jerome Harrison Canopy Project to Tomlinson Hawley Patterson in the amount of $86,900.
Second. Discussion?
And that's, and that's for the walkway, the covered walkway from the preschool building to Jerome Harrison, finally we have this.
That's great, put to bed.
We are using, well, we are, but we're using school choice money to offset the $45,000 from the grant, so.
But we have a canopy now, it's taken a while, so that's good news.
Canopies are good.
We have a bid.
We have a bid. Well, that's what I'm saying, it'll be booked, great.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And that was pretty much it for budget.
Curriculum?
We had meeting tonight, the nursery school is getting NIAAC certified, or for NIAAC accreditation, so there was just a pamphlet and it talked about NIAAC accreditation. My, the place I work is already going through this too, so this isn't anything new to me, so I don't know how good my summary will be. I think if I knew nothing about it, it would be a better summary. But the NIAAC is a standard that the country uses, even when I was taking classes at Middlesex, you would have your book that you'd be studying, and then off to the side we'd talk about NIAAC standards. So there are specific standards for NIAAC, which is separate from the Kinetik standards that we use for curriculum, so this is separate. It talks about the whole child, it discusses, you know, they look at health for the kids, like the kids actually have to brush their teeth, they have to turn the water on with a paper towel, there's like certain standards that you have to do. There's, they pride themselves on relationships with the whole family, so you get to know the whole child. And then there's assessment pieces for the child, they have staff support to help with the NIAAC standards, these, if you're in a NIAAC program, you're encouraged to help out in the community, like we did stuff to get like, you know, the Postman Evolve door, so to know your environment that you're living in, you know, the grocery store, the, you know, postal, you know, library, that stuff, and...
So is it, does NIAAC like best practices?
NIAAC is National Association for Educating Young Children, so it is, they are the national standards for usually birth fitting and for programs specifically pre-k and into second grade. So as part of our smart start grant, we have to get pregnant or we will not continue to get funding. So we are in the process of a self-study, we'll go for self-assessment, and next year we'll have a site visit for NIAAC for accreditation, and once we have that, it indicates that we set up percent of their standards, there's 10 different standards, they go from everything, as Carolyn mentioned, from physical well-being to curriculum to, you know, growth order skills, there's quite included in those standards, they're quite rigorous, and our people are working now to make portfolios for submission for site visit.
There was no pension meeting. Policy, Beth?
Policy, yes, we tabled P1245 at the last month's meeting, and there was a question about the oral assessment and the base of physical exam, and we still did not get any information from the attorney, so I'd like to table it again until we get my opinion.
Can I ask a really, really stupid question, Beth?
No stupid question, but plug it up again.
Who is on the policy committee? Just you, right? Okay, so.
Don's in the room.
No, 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 I know, but why did you meet with yourself?
Don sends me a little email and says, "Do you want to meet?" And we meet usually like 1:00, 1:30.
During the day.
Yeah, because it's around the convenience room, obviously, because Santa's available.
It used to be at 9:00.
We used to meet at 7:00 in the morning, and that wasn't, there was no need to meet at 7:00 in the morning because, I don't want to speak to you, but we prefer the afternoon.
No, I'm not getting up this late.
Right, I wasn't going to say that, I'm trying to be diplomatic here, so we're flexible with what we're doing.
And there was years ago where we met in the evening, when I was on it at 1:00, when we met in the evening, so it's around whoever's on the committee, it's around their availability.
Well, one person isn't a committee. One person is one person, that's what I got with gathering, and I keep forgetting to ask every time I hear policy, like, there's no one but you on it, I'm just curious if anyone else would like to assist.
Well, it's availability, if we change the time, and if anyone is interested, we could do it before a board meeting, if you're not on curriculum, we could meet. Right, so that would mean we'd start...
But I mean, I would love to have someone else, usually what happens is Don presents the policy to me that has, the lawyer has said that we need to make some statutory changes to and go from there, and then if I have questions, you're looking like an ass, then who comes aboard?
He's looking, he's kind of, not me.
I'll nominate someone if you want.
I'm already on it.
So it's around availability with the time, because people are employed, so if we did it before a board meeting, we'd have to do it before curriculum, and then give us enough time to digest what we're doing.
How many times do you do this?
Once a month.
Once a month, okay, and how much notice do you have for the time? Like, I'm usually around during the days, but I need notice because I have...
It's when you get answers back and then we reach out and make a schedule.
I'll say, "Oh, you want to meet this week, Monday, Tuesday, and at this particular time," so it's very...
If you are interested, then we could say...
I wouldn't say interested as much as I feel like it's probably helpful to have to, so. Well, because it will only be Beth soon.
It what?
Beth's last day is June, so who's, who are replacing him?
Yeah, we still would need two people, regardless.
All right, I'll do it. It's going to be during the day?
It's what's convenient for you and Beth.
It's what's convenient for you.
Whatever. It just was convenient because I was available, Don was available, no one else was on it.
We can look at a day that's good for you, and if it works, if it's Wednesdays are not a good day for you during the week, and it's in the afternoon, we'll say, "Listen, let's do it on Wednesday," and we'll work around that.
It could be earlier or later.
No, Mondays are short calendar days, I won't be able to do them Mondays, but usually Tuesday through Friday.
We usually met on Tuesdays.
Right.
All right, I'll...
Make a motion then.
I don't think we need a motion, but to appoint to a committee.
All right, I'll sit in the bed. Do we have to contact the lawyer for a question, anything on the statutory changes, or?
No, I think the lawyer contacted Don and said that there were changes that had to be made.
They mark it up.
So did they do all the typing, the blue and the red?
Yes, they do, that's all. We can do a voice conference if we need to, so we could go into a conference call if there was something urgent, but we brought Suzanne in for clarification on things, or anyone that, you know, with special ed law or anything like that, so we have the resources, if not, we can do a conference call.
But then, because normally I don't get the policy until I meet with Don, so if we did a conference, we'd have to get it earlier so we could read it, because a lot of it comes to me, I'm sitting there, and Don's going over, you know, why it's blue, why it's green, and the changes we need to make.
All right, I'll serve as your guide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, and I think that would be nice with that.
Yes.
Okay.
Aces, it was, our meeting was this afternoon, unfortunately, we started our meeting with another moment of silence for a member who passed away, Aneth Kelso, which is very sad. John Prince from Cave awarded a Bonnie B. Carney Communications Award of Excellence to Aces AV Project. We had an ECA recognition, there was 80 students from eight different art schools who competed, and ECA student won, Remus Remsen, and she presented her piece that she won with, it was performing arts, and she, now she goes on to a competition on Broadway, so that was exciting.
Oh, nice.
And she was really good, I mean, it was very impressive. We had an update on Leader Hill Project, it's moving along, it looks like it's going to open on time, it's supposed to be open in the fall, so one half of the building is a little ahead of the other half of the building, so D is ahead, A needs to catch up. Then we also had an update on the John Slate Eli House, which is in Tremble, New Haven, that is a house they're renovating, it's a historic building, they're renovating it, which will give additional space to ECA, so they have to put in this historic building, an elevator, and then they need two staircases to meet, you know, the requirements for having students in the building, and they're trying to work with the town community, because they're fighting on what you should do to the building as far as changing historical buildings. We approved the budgets for 12 things, Town... We approved the budgets for 12 things, Thomas Edison Magnet School, the Extension Therapy Services, Education Center for the Arts, ACES International, the Governing Board, Executive Directors, Human Resources, Fiscal Services, ACES Institute, Air Security, Assistant Executive Director Service, and Marketing Communications. And we also approved the calendar for the Thomas Edison Mill School, and that's pretty much some of the meeting.
Very nice.
I have an elevator, or I need one.
Yeah, well, I think they might want one that works.
We'll get a great deal on it. Thank you.
Any new business? Oh, wait a minute, Cindy, did you have a wellness meeting?
We did, but it got moved, and I was not able to make the date.
Was anyone at the wellness meeting? Well, tell me about it.
Yeah, this was the last one of the year, so one of the things we started with this time, the fifth graders presented a debate to the wellness committee around chocolate milk versus whole milk, it's something they're working on in their writing project, so the kids were really fond about it. They presented on both sides of the argument, asked a lot of questions to the committee, which included Michael Auger, fun spirit, they showed their research skills, so that was a good time.
You want?
I hope chocolate milk.
I hope chocolate.
I tried to push up against it, but it worked. So that was the fun part, we don't usually get to hear from students on the committees, that was nice. Then we did a discussion of wellness guidelines that are out, one of the implications on programming, health classes, PE courses, we talked about that. Planning a K-12 internet safety presentation for parents in the fall, in September, as well as fifth through eighth grade students, so we're working on that. Another group, we're considering high school, middle school, maybe, maybe other interested persons working with youth around, just, you know, preventing any type of substance abuse, and he's calling it a part of group, and he started it in other committees. So kids get together, just feel part of some things, so that they connect, and they don't turn to those things. So we're considering possibly involving that in North Bramford. And then, just checking what are some articles for next year, Dr. Health really wants to look at anxiety as a whole issue, just requires, that's something that we're focusing some work on for next year, curriculum efforts, continuing to push for social support, those types of things. And then we just talked about how we continue to get involvement on the wellness committee, and just how we structure our time for the future.
Productive meeting, must have been fun with the kids, it's always fun with that.
All right, new business? No? Go to the board.
I went to the Spectrum concert that they had yesterday, which had children that were in the band from grades five to 12, and they all played two pieces, and then the really cool part was after everybody did their thing, they had everybody come up, and they did super Califragilis, because we had dishes, so on. You had the children that were on the stage, and then you had the children on like the wings of the stage, and then you had the teachers actually in the, like, audience directing them, it was, and the whole place just blew up with the sound. It was, it was just awesome, it was.
They had over 300 kids performing.
It was so, yeah, it was, it was so cool, and it was just really neat seeing how the children progressed from grades five all the way up to grade 12. I was tired and didn't really feel like going, but by the end of it, I was like, that's really cool to be a part of this.
Was that videoed?
By parents everywhere in the office. But I, that's a good question, I'll find out. It was, it was, they did, they did a great job.
Kudos to the teachers, the teachers were amazing, and that, oh my God, I was so tired after working, and I'm watching the high school music instructor, I'm like, she is a little ball of energy, that one, she doesn't stop.
Katie Padano is our K-12 director, but she plays with the kids.
Yes, she was doing the trumpet.
They're all a bar, I don't want to get, but they're all professional musicians, they all play with big groups on the side, and to have them, and three of them went to hard school and were accomplished, to have them working with our kids, they're really top-notch. We've seen so much growth early, all the way through to high school, so that's just a plug, but Carolyn's right, they really did a great job.
They only play, I think they only practiced, if I understood, like, right before, so they didn't even practice all together. I had to drop Ava off at 5:30, and that's when they practiced, so to have them all do it, it was just, I was like, oh, I can't wait to see how this turns out. It was phenomenal, it was just, it was, it really made me proud of our school system.
And a great crowd, great crowd.
Parents everywhere taped, just send me a copy, I'll let me see.
We'll find some, some.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, I wanted to commend Ms. Parker, because I went to Jerome Harrison, my grandchildren were in the school system, and I went to the Jerome Harrison art show and music show that they put on, you want to speak about it a few minutes? It was standing room only, couldn't even get a parking, they parked in the field, there's so many cars, you want to say a few things about that?
Sure, sure, thank you, so Linda Franklin Bakes, our music teacher, and Diana Weller, our art teacher, put on a wonderful show for first and second grade students and parents. It was a night where first graders came in with their parents and family members, and they were able to look at their arts, those all over the school, and then they sang beautiful songs about kindness and positivity, it was, it was an amazing night, it really was.
And like I said, the field hockey field was just filled with cars, I mean, it was standing room only, so many parents and grandparents came to the, to the event. Ms. Parker, the music teacher and art teacher did a great job, she was really good.
Right, and to see all of our first and second graders in our chorus performed as well later in the night, and really just, you know, kind of to quote what Carolyn mentioned before about leaving and really feeling so proud of our school system, most of the night, I couldn't stop smiling, and I kept on singing the positivity song on the way home. It was, it was a wonderful night, and kids are still singing it, so.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
I'll be around for the next 12 years.
Is that a threat? But thank you, unless there are others, thank you for sharing, because it's important, it's important that everyone hears, and I know our staff really appreciates when you're there, and it really reinforces what we're here for, so it really goes a long way to hear your positive comments, and that you're there, you're supporting not only your children, but all the children in the district, so thank you all.
Visitors impressed? Quiet. All right, the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 16, 2019, and I have a motion to adjourn.
So won't.
We're looking, second, I have a motion to the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone have a great week.